Welcome, everyone. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. It's Wednesday, September 15, 2021, and the time is 10:26 a.m. Notices for this hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, September 8, Monday, September 13, 2021, and the notice was published in the Guam Daily Post on those same dates. We're going to proceed now with a hearing on Bill Number 156-36-COR introduced by Senator V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duñez, James C. Moylan. The bill will be introduced shortly. I'd like to recognize first the presence of my colleagues, beginning with my vice chair, Senator Sabina Paris, with the minority leader, Senator Christopher Duñez, Senator V. Anthony Ada, Senator Teletitakui. And I want to thank you and Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, senators, for joining us today. All right, I'll now recognize the sponsor of the bill, Senator Anthony Ada, to introduce him.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning, everyone. I'd just like to thank you, Madam Speaker, for hearing this bill. This is Bill 156-S36, and this is to add a new Section 10107 to Chapter 10, Title 20 GCA, Relative to Adding Civil Orders of Abatement as a Remedy for Public and Private Nuisances. Current Guam Law Madam Speaker defines public and private nuisances and provides the remedy of abatement for parties that seek relief from nuisance. Under 20 GCA, it's defined as anything which is injurious to health or is indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property or unlawful obstruction or unlawfully obstructs the free passage or use in the customary manner of any river, bay, stream, canal, or basin, or any public park, square, street, or highway, is a nuisance. Common nuisances are creations of loud noises that may disturb the peace, burning of trash or vegetation, storing junk automobiles, appliances, or trash on one's property, or operating a business in an area where such business is generally not permitted. Public nuisances generally affect an entire neighborhood where private nuisances generally affect adjoining property owners. This bill allows Guam Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Public Works, our village mayors, Guam Police Department, and other law enforcement to issue orders of abatement. The orders of abatement include the following: removal of the nuisance, destruction of the nuisance, concealment of the nuisance, and cease and desist orders. Madam Speaker, under current law, the aggrieved party may seek relief by either civil action or by removing the abating, by removing the nuisance himself. So like example, you know, removing a vehicle that's parked on their property or adjacent to his property. The statute also allows the aggrieved party to file a complaint, but the law is silent on the complaint process and the enforcement procedures. And this is where Bill 156-36 comes in. As I previously mentioned, those four things, removal of the nuisance, destruction, concealment, and cease and desist orders can be used by our government officials to abate the nuisance either upon a complaint that is given to them by an aggrieved person or upon their own judgment, Madam Speaker. And I look forward to hearing the testimonies from our agencies and my colleagues on this bill. Thank you.
You very much, Senator Ada. Just for the record, the Guam Police Department had a peer before the committee and stated their intention to submit written testimony and that they are in support of this bill. I want to state that for the record and that the fiscal impact note from BBMR states that, well, no, we've not received a fiscal impact note for this particular bill. And with that, we will proceed with testimony. We have Mr. Tom Nado from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. If you could please state your name and position. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. Yes, my name is Tom Nado. I am the Chief Environmental Public Health Officer with the Division of Environmental Health of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Am I first up to testify now, Speaker?
Yes, please.
Oh, I see. Thank you very much, Speaker. Yes, so once again, my name is Tom Nado, Department of Public Health, Madam Speaker, and members of Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. The Director and I, Mr. Arthur San Augustine, we thank you for giving the department the opportunity to give its testimony to Bill 156-36, a bill to impose civil orders of abatement to the offending party in remedy of nuisance. The Department of Public Health and Social Services is partly, but not fully, in support of Bill 156-36. While we agree to the spirit and intent of the proposed bill, we don't believe its adoption into law will be the best interest of public health as currently written. It will become more of another unfunded mandate for Division of Environmental Health, otherwise known as DEH. Moreover, the department is concerned with inclusion of private nuisance in the bill. While reviewing the applicable statutes, which are Chapters 10, 11, and 12 of Title 20 GCA, we noticed that no specific department or agency is identified as the authorized entity to enforce these chapters as Senator Ada had mentioned. Thus, we're guessing this is one of the reasons why Bill 156 was introduced, to specifically identify the responsible departments and agencies, including Public Health, in the enforcement of public and private nuisances. For some who may not be aware, one of the many mandates of DEH is Chapter 20, titled 10 GCA. This chapter identifies public nuisance and authorizes a division to inspect public and private grounds, buildings, vehicles, aircraft, ships, and other places except private homes to enforce the abatement of public nuisances. Many of the provisions of Bill 156-36 already exist in Title 10, Chapter 20. Public nuisance in our governing statutes is defined as, quote, "anything that is determined by the director to be dangerous to life, injurious to health, or renders soil, air, water, or food impure or unwholesome," unquote. It's a fairly broad definition, but it does not include indecent or offensive to the senses as it does in Title 20, Chapter 10, which we believe can be very subjective and open to challenges without some form of established standards. What may be offensive in sight and snow for one party may not be for another. One of the biggest differences of our public nuisance law in Title 10, Chapter 20 versus Title 20, Chapter 10, is that our governing law treats public nuisance as a criminal violation. And all unabated violations are referred to the Office Attorney General. This is a cumbersome and resource-heavy means of remedying the problem. So Public Health is supportive of the monetary penalty provision of Bill 156-36. However, the department recommends that the penalty provision be amended so that it's based on the severity of the nuisance by allowing the respective department or agency to assess fines that could range from $100 to $10,000 each day per violation when the violator fails to comply with the order. We also recommend that provision be included that identifies where the collective fines will be deposited. By possessing the ability to issue fines, it should allow Public Health the ability to resolve nuisances quickly without going through the court system. For example, there have been numerous public nuisance cases handled by DEH where the offender refused to correct the violation or simply delayed the mitigation efforts. Consequently, multiple visits and their issuance of written citations were necessary by inspectors. These expended valuable time and limited, invaluable and limited time and resources for cases that took weeks to months to resolve. We suspect most of these cases could have been resolved quickly if monetary fines or the threat of issuing such fines were possible. An important provision we believe that is missing from the proposed bill is how the citation is to be issued and how it will be adjudicated. Is each identified department or agency required to create its own regulations in the manner of the citations to be issued? And now these departments expected to follow the administrative adjudication law, otherwise known as AAL, to provide due process to those issued a citation. If the AAL is to be utilized, please note that attorney must be the hearing officer of all contested citations, which only add to the challenge of Public Health in implementing this law if adopted. Public Health does not have its own attorney. It would have to seek assistance of the Office Attorney General to do so. To possibly remedy this issue, Public Health recommends insertion of a section bill to provide an alternative means of adjudicating contested cases without the need for an attorney as the hearing officer. In addition, please be informed that our nuisance provision in Title 10, Chapter 20, is applicable for only public nuisance, not private nuisance, which is the other biggest difference between our mandate in Title 20, Chapter 10. It is a policy of this department to only respond to nuisances that impact the public that prohibits their right to pursue life without threat to health and comfort, such as unlawful discharge of sewage, presence of a mosquito breeding site, possessing livestock or residential property, and other violations that harm or potentially harm all or majority of the general public. The department does not act on private nuisances that are caused, that cause private damage or interferes with the use and enjoyment of private property. Public Health needs private nuisances as a civil matter to be addressed in a civil court. In distinguishing between the two types of nuisances, DEH simply determines if a public law pertinent to environmental health has been violated. Because of the inclusion of private nuisance in Bill 156-36, Public Health cannot fully support the proposed legislation. It's been no secret that DEH has been understaffed to implement its numerous mandates. If enacted, Bill 156-36 will be another unfunded mandate of the division. Although DEH responds to every bona fide public nuisance complaint as required by law, it may not do so timely because of its limited resources. All nuisance complaints are prioritized based on the health risk alleged nuisance is posing to the community. However, if it is a private nuisance, then DEH will not take, will take no action and inform the complainant of the reason, as explained above. DEH receives between 100 to 150 public nuisance complaints every year, and about half are not addressed until several months later. If DEH is forced to, is forced to respond and act on private nuisances, it will lead to additional responsibilities with the same number of personnel. At further delays investigating complaints, adversely impact other environmental health programs, and may even endanger the health and safety of inspectors. Most private nuisance complaints that DEH has received involve landlord, tenant matters, or neighbor-to-neighbor disagreements, such as damages to their rental home resulting from lack of maintenance or repair, or loud music, or pets causing disturbance in one or more neighbors, to one or more neighbors. If DEH was to investigate each private nuisance complaint, our investigators may need to enter private homes or private properties alone to confirm the violation with an unhappy or angry homeowner, tenant, and landowner in a potentially volatile situation. There are stories from former health inspectors how they were threatened and confronted by landowners who were wielding firearms when responding to unknown nuisance complaints from the public. By policy and practice, our inspectors may not enter private property if they went, may enter private property, I'm sorry, if they weren't invited to investigate public nuisance complaints, but they do not enter private homes for safety reasons. In summary, Public Health supports the monetary provision of Bill 156-36, but recommends that the penalty be increased. However, we do not support the inclusion of private nuisance or enforcement as would adversely affect DEH's operation. Also, disposition of fines generated, the method the citation ought to be issued, and how contested cases ought to be adjudicated should be addressed. Thank you very much, and Jesus mighty.
Thank you very much, Chief Nado, for that detailed testimony. I want to correct myself earlier. I said we had not received the fiscal note from BBMR, but we have. And so they say that the potential fines imposed for failure to abate a nuisance or failure to obey a cease and desist order would generate funds toward the judiciary of Guam. However, absent additional information to estimate the number of civil orders that might be issued and the amount of fines that may be imposed for violations, the fiscal impact of this legislation cannot be determined at this time. All right, we'll continue now with Mr. Deputy Director Adrian Cruz from the Department of Agriculture. Thank you for your patience, all of you, for waiting this morning for the other hearing. Thank you.
Buenos dias, Doctor Sanz. Uno, dos, y tres, mi madre. I'd like to also echo the Department of Public Health. I thank the senators for considering giving us another tool in our toolbox. As you know, us regulatory agencies and the mayors are usually kind of the front line when it comes to dealing with these types of issues of nuisances. My own department, we have livestock issues, people who are raising animals in residential areas, dogs and the like. I do have some concerns, and like I said, I'd like to echo Public Health. One of the things is also on the issue of the fines. I'll give you a real-world scenario. There is a large parcel of property. It's mainly jungle, and there's a public easement with some private roads inside. And people like to enjoy hunting, and there are people's ranches there. Sometimes people block the road, and we get the complaints about that. And of course, we would ask the property owner or the adjacent property owners to please clear the right-of-way. And of course, they don't, for whatever reason. You know, we try to enforce our authority to be able to access certain areas, but it's cheaper for them to pay the fine than to expend their resources to go ahead and take care of the problem. So although it's great that we have that $100 fine to begin with, I would suggest also that the follow-up fines, the fines for violations of that also go up. Because a lot of the times, they know that the department itself will end up expending personnel and resources to go ahead and clean up the problem that they need. So adding to the, to the fine for failure of mitigating whatever initial violation, I think would be a great help. The other concern I also have is that, of course, our manpower is limited. And so to enforce this, it might become a challenge in the future. But thank you, Senator, for helping us to be able to have teeth to some of the orders that we have to give out with the public. Like I said, I'm sure the mayors know best how difficult that can be. And thank you for thinking of us and how we can help serve the public and especially people who are affected by the behavior or, you know, trespassing of their neighbors. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Cruz. So now here from Mayor Gogli.
Thank you, senators.
Sorry, Mayor, you're very soft. If you could do something to make it louder, please.
Can you hear me now?
Look.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Well, I want to thank all of the senators for the opportunity to speak. I did not come with a prepared statement like Tom Nado and Adrian Cruz with regard to this bill. In fact, I just found out about this bill yesterday. Although I saw, I've seen the notices about the public hearings, I really wasn't paying attention to this particular bill until our regular meeting, Mayor's Council of Guam meeting yesterday. I'm surprised that some of my other colleagues aren't here because this had some lively discussions during our regular meeting when, when the President, Mayor Alec, had mentioned that the public hearing for Bill 156-36 would be heard this morning. And, you know, in concert with what Tom and Adrian have mentioned, you know, I kind of echoed their sentiments with regard to, you know, the resources on the enforcement. However, I did note that in the bill, it says that mayors of each village or their designated. So I'm interpreting that, that you've elevated us to the authority given to directors, that the directors who have the authority to regulate are now able to pass it down to a regulatory arm within their departments. And although mayors don't really have a regulatory arm, you know, we do have personnel that obviously allows us to, could potentially allow us to designate for the enforcement of this abatement. Now, and looking at the bill for the short time, I actually had an opportunity to kind of review it and kind of do some background research. You know, when we talk about suas ponte-type laws, you know, one of the old common consistent remarks about this type of law is guerrilla rules, you know, is that, you know, what may be offensive or a nuisance to one may not be applicable to others. And, and that could pose some real serious concerns, not only for regulatory agencies, but I think the mayors in general. Because, I mean, you know, I can imagine what, what kind of calls are received by both Public Health and Department of Agriculture. But I mean, if nuisance as defined here in this bill is, it says what? Remedies? Anything which is injurious to health or is indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to free use of property or so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property or unlawful obstruct, or obstruct the free passage, the free passage or use in the customary manner of any river, bay, stream, canal, basin, and so on and so forth. That's what's in the current law. And then when we take a look at expanding this to, you know, an interpretation, I think Tom said it best. Is this really what we want to do? Or do we have to go through defining, better defining what a nuisance is and potentially taking it through the AAA process based on our mandates? You know, obviously, Public Health has specific mandates. And are we looking at having them define these suas ponte nuisance or nuisances based on their mandates? Likewise, with Department of Agriculture, when it comes to both animal control and/or fish and wildlife, or, you know, the protection of our natural resources. And then, you know, along the same, those same lines, the mayors. You know, we have a mandate of being able to issue citations based on the leash law, littering, and graffiti. And currently, those are our three mandates. And so this really opens up a wide room for interpretation, interpretation. And I'll tell you what, I've gotten calls, and I'm sure I just noticed the mayor Hoffman has logged on. I've gotten phone calls from people that complain about something that other people wouldn't complain about. And that other neighbors don't complain about it, just for that one particular person. They believe it to be offensive. And so how do you handle those situations? I mean, obviously, it's the mayor's call, but because, you know, this bill is kind of open to interpretation. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just wondering what kind of litigation could that in turn create for agencies that are enforcing this particular bill? And, and as Tom pointed out with Public Health, the Mayor's Council of Guam, we do not have legal counsel on a regular basis, unlike a Department of Public Works. And I don't even believe that the Department of Agriculture has legal counsel on a regular basis. My understanding, we have Department of Public Works, we have, of course, the Department of Land Management, but these other agencies that to some extent, oh, and Guam Economic, Guam Environmental Protection Agency, I believe they have regular counsel. But some of these other regulatory enforcement arms that are allowed by law, we don't have a full-time counsel that we can seek their advice or opinion on whether or not this is something that we should go ahead and move forward with the enforcement of and to avoid potential litigation, you know, as, you know, in the future. And so I just, I think the intent, the idea, the concept of the law is great. I just think it needs to really be better to, you know, to ensure that the implementation of this bill into law does not open us up to future litigation because, you know, it really is a matter of interpretation or what often is referred to the guerrilla rules as far as what is one, what one considers to be offensive and may not be offensive to the perpetrator themselves. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gogli. I would like to recognize Mayor Robert Hoffman from San Onofre, Mayor Hoffman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senators, good morning. I, you know, I want to thank the sponsor of the bill for this. This mayor's legislative committee has been working on this legislation and just helping craft, trying to find ideas and solutions to kind of what we're having to deal with. Many of the times that we call these agencies who just testified, or they don't come. Flat out, they don't come. And despite what they say, and, you know, they have so many things they need to do that when we call, and there's 18 other mayors calling about certain things, it's even just the investigative side of. I've had stockpiles of trash, and when the investigator gets there, they say, we don't have the authority to get on their property. But yet you can physically see the trash, even from my office, you can see houses with piles of trash. And, you know, then they go there and they say, oh, they have, you know, 60 days or 90 days to do it. So I mean, I was kind of saddened to see these agencies not wanting the ability to just look at something and find a solution and get the help they need. I don't think DPHS has done anything in the last two years out there in the community. A while ago, we got a letter from a director saying, oh, we're not going to do it anymore. And mayors, it's on you to handle these things. And so it became kind of like, why, why just us now? And it's not, for us, it's not even in the mandate of our area expertise either. We don't have the resources, like Mayor Gogli said, with the legal. And, you know, we had to go through citation training and all these other things. Even with that, citations at the end, and then by the time it gets to the courts and everything, it became a debacle of it. And we're just looking for solutions of, to deal with noise ordinances when things run late at night. Or, you know, people are using the government properties for their own junkyards or repair shops. And, you know, like a lady in this morning's show on KF7 said, there's cars from end to end in Swamp Road, and we're trying to figure out which ways. And, you know, for EPA and Public Health and all the other, it's just kind of just turn the other way. And everyone's saying it's the mayor's issues to deal with. It kind of, we're trying to figure out why, why, why aren't they doing this? Why aren't they taking it as seriously as we are? And so it always falls back on the mayor. So, you know, is it a perfect bill? No, but is there something that we can do to help tweak it and give it the teeth? Because these nuisances are a problem. I know people that it affects their health. They get, they can't sleep, they're constantly calling here, trying to figure it out of what's within the regulation, and they see other jurisdictions in the states. And, you know, they have these little codes that kind of help keep a community, a community itself versus it growing into something else that they don't want. So, you know, we're trying to find what can we define and what can we do? And hopefully that Public Health and Agriculture and BPW get on board with this and actually do their job. I really want them to do their jobs as well. You know, I don't like to see that it's done just initiatives or programs here and there. If they consistently did their jobs, we wouldn't have the situation where it relied on the mayors to kind of go in there and try to figure something else out. We don't have any authority to go into private property either. So if things are happening behind the house, we rely on the neighbors to send us photos. We set it up the chain, and then suddenly, it's, you know, we'll get back to you, mayor, and nothing happens. And it's not so, somebody just finally just goes there and says, you know what? Here's what the law says. And I've never seen anybody successfully prosecuted or fined any way for this. Any of the nuisances that do exist on the books for EPA or Public Health. So I'm hoping we can fix, you know, we can fix what needs to be fixed here where it needs, you know, muster and can pass. But, you know, there are jurisdictions that have public and private nuisance laws in this place. And hopefully, we can kind of use that as the model. And that's all I want to say there. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the time.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hoffman, for your testimony. I think that concludes all the testimony that we have for today. And I'm going to ask the sponsor if he'd like to begin with questions. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, you know, I don't have any questions. I'd just like to thank all the agencies and the mayors for coming out to, you know, testify on this bill. And I think that's what's very important, is that we have public hearings on the bills that we introduce so that we can get the input of the community. Because sometimes when we look at our legislations that we introduce, we don't have all the answers, but when we get the bits and pieces of the puzzle from the community to strengthen the bill, then it makes it better for the bill and for the enforcement of such laws or, you know, of such. And so I like to thank them for coming out. Is there places in the bill that could use strengthening? Absolutely. But like I said, we wouldn't know it if we didn't have a public hearing. And I'm glad that the mayors took their time out to come on today to testify. Uh, testify on this, and especially Tom and uh and Adrian, uh Mr. Nado and Mr. Cruz for coming out and and giving your testimonies as well. And I look forward to working with my committee, with the uh with the committee, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. And my my colleagues to strengthen this bill so that we can once and for all have a. Um, an answer to the questions that everybody has, and that's what are we doing as lawmakers and what are we doing? As public officials to address the concerns that the public have, and are we doing it to the best of our ability and without. Um, trying to pit one agency or or person against another and making it something that we can all be. Uh, held accountable for. And I'd just like to again thank them all for uh their testimony today. Uh, you know, this bill. Doesn't say that you have to turn around and and issue a, you know, citation. I mean, if there's ways where you can turn around and say. Uh, you know, Mister Mister Paris, can you just uh clean up that mess and, you know, we, you know. Give the verbal warning, and then in the event they don't, then you can come back and uh issue a citation if need be. Or take other remedies to to strengthen or to uh to uh. Work out the situation that's there. So, but like I said again, Madam Chair, the whatever we need to do to strengthen our our bill and to strengthen our law. Then uh I'm I'm willing to go that the full force to do so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada. I I also recognize the need for a um further clarification of our nuisance laws. To empower everyone who needs this type of power to enforce or to abate nuisances. We seem to have in our laws, uh, and I had invited the AG, uh, hope to get their testimony, of course, Public Defender, the Guam Bar. The Guam Code, um, the um. Many other agencies to testify as well, because I recognize the need for some of these regulatory agencies to have further tools as a. Deputy Director Cruz said. But we have in our laws right now, we have private nuisances, we have public nuisances, we have civil. Civil actions that can be done, and then we have um like as the direct. Uh, or the Public Health testimony, they they have their own statutes, uh, when the director of Public Health deemed something a public nuisance. But the penalty is a misdemeanor, right? That's a criminal action. And so, and then I also looked at. So recently, the Attorney General filed a public nuisance lawsuit for the damage done at the solar farm. And uh, so I was very curious what uh authority they were using there, and so they used five G C three zero one one. Zero, which says the AG can bring civil actions to abate public nuisances. But there's also authority for the AG to bring actions for private nuisances. And then, as I said earlier, the the misdemeanors. So anyways, I I think I need to, uh, the committee needs to have a further discussion with Attorney General to make sure that we are consistent. Uh, but but as to. Tools, I I think if we are, yeah. Using these powers, um, if granted. I think require legal advice, right? I mean, as if they've testified, there are dangers to. Going out trying to enforce these type of things and uh and you have, you want to be right, right? And you, we want enforceable actions, as the mayor Hoffman said, we want something that's going to stand up, and so we're going to try to do that. Uh, I'm looking forward to GPD's testimony. I I want to know. I can't find myself whether GPD, you know, how they are able to. Act on nuisances. And so that's not clear to me, if anyone wants to talk about that. I can't find that in the statutes, except through. The Attorney General's office. Yeah. May Hoffman, did you have something on that? Yeah.
Yes, actually, and and the example that we have is every, if we, the mayors called GPD, they say, we, it's not us to enforce this. That's always their line. If it's animals, it's, don't call us, call agriculture. If it's noise, don't call us, call EPA. If it's junk cars, it's, don't call us, call Public Health, call EPA. So GPD ends up saying, mayors, what do you want us to do? What do you, where do you want, what do you want us to write on this? So, you know, if it has to be the education component of it, that's what we're having, that's what we're struggling with on a day-to-day basis. Boots on the ground, mirrors on all at all hours. It's, they don't know what to do on their end because it involves another agency who doesn't, is who's not awake after. Who's not working after five P M.
All right. Okay, that's what I was afraid of, that, uh, yeah, we've got this uh overlapping jurisdiction or or, yeah. That that all the parties are not very clear, and we do need to. Get them more powers. All right. Senator Duainis, I recognize you.
This is Muslim Madam Chair, and of course, as a co-sponsor, um, you know, I I support the intent, and this is a great dialogue today. Uh, thank you to, um, you know, Adrian, the deputy of, um, you know, agriculture and Tom Nado, DPHSS. And of course, the mayors, I I have to, you know. Kind of really completely agree with Mayor Hoffman. I mean, this is, this is really what it comes down to, and sometimes bills. Uh, when they're introduced, create a more opportunity for for really highlighting what exists in our community. And we do have a lot of this push and pull and referral to other places, and you hear this a lot frustration from the community. That, you know, it seems that when something wants to get, doesn't need to get done, there's a lot of shifting. And so. You know, maybe I'm going to talk to the author, maybe we we go to a roundtable setting. Uh, on this bill to bring everybody to the table, because I think also, if you look at other jurisdictions, Madam Speaker, and 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 to the folks are here today. You know, a lot of this is is about education on municipal orders, you know, in a lot of jurisdictions, you have posted orders, you have posted information. Which basically makes it clear, and there's not a lot of confrontation sometimes in the community, like Mayor Hoffman was saying, when there's a complete education of. What is expected and what ordinances mean. And so, uh, you know, like I said, I'm going to ask uh the 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 author to maybe. Uh, take this a step further and and have us work with you, Madam Speaker, to have a roundtable. So that we we really secure, and then, of course, that legal authority, right? In the end, we we don't want agencies out there, and Tom, I I I concur with you. We don't want people out there. That are put in harm's way and trying to enforce law with with individuals, as Mayor Gogui said, have different interpretations of what is a nuisance. But I think there is some clarity, like when we talk about a a a whole road lined with cars. I mean, let's be clear, right? I mean, that that's a hazard, that's a problem, that's got to be taken care of. Um, you know, when we have uh situations where, you know, an individual is using private property in an area where they're they're raising pigs. And raising chickens en masse, you know, I mean, let's be clear, right? That's a nuisance to others. So I think if we're clear on on what these really key areas are, and people are aware that they can receive fines, you know, without. Yeah, adhering to ordinances in communities where we're trying to have, you know, really really uh peaceful coexistence and equality of life. I think that's really a big deal, but yes, and bring the AG's office in on our roundtable. So we can also make it clear that, you know, when enforcement comes down, you know, what legal authorities and not to become confrontational. But fees and fines do carry weight, you know, we, when we're driving down the road and we're not wearing our seatbelt, you know, we know if we get pinched, we're going to pay. And so fees and fines have a have a, you know, a way of making sure that our community abides, and also that our. That our agencies and our mayors have the tools to do their jobs. I just wanted to say that I think that maybe this might be the direction to go, Madam Speaker, to. To improve this bill, but to also use it as an educational opportunity, and that those are the comments that I have at this time. This is must see.
This must see Senator Duainis. Senator Taitikui, you're recognized.
This is Muslim Madam Speaker, and um thank you to the mayors who are here. I was, I attended your meeting yesterday for two hours. That was a long meeting you had there, and uh this bill was discussed toward the tail end of it. And appreciate both mayors coming on because they had both different perspectives on this legislation. And I'm glad you shared your perspectives today. Um, I agree about a, you know, I I wrote down some notes here, uh, based on on that meeting that you had. Well, based on what was said during the mayor's uh meeting yesterday, and that was to incorporate a roundtable. Uh, Senator Duainis mentioned that too as well, and it's it's basically to discuss and strengthen the intent of the legislature. And and most especially to provide data. Uh, data will show the need for this enforcement and the need for this legislation. Data is very important, and I'm pretty sure a lot of the data that you have, mayors, are not always just. Not always documented, you know, it's like walk by, you see this, for instance, something happened, you know, this neighbor who did something. And sometimes you don't write it down, but I think that is very important uh to maintain. We need to ensure that EPA is also invited to this roundtable. Because they can also ensure some, you know, areas that uh this legislation. Well, what they can currently do right now to enforce, you know, um. The abandoned vehicle has has been a project I've been working on for for quite some time right now, and I think this this might be the avenue. Uh, this legislation might be the avenue to address the abandoned vehicle issues that come about. Uh, disturbing the peace is a big issue. I mean, how do you measure that? And that's when the legal perspective goes into play. On that, because, you know, you don't want to violate, you know, people's rights and what their liberties and freedoms, so we have to be very cautious. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to provide comments and concerns and and looking forward, uh, Madam Speaker, if. Um, a roundtable is to concur that, you know, I I'd like to be there to participate. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Taitikui. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill, and I certainly do. The author, Senator Adan, his co-sponsors, Senator Chris and Senator Moiland for introducing this, and what I understand. From the testimony, obviously, there are a number of issues that have been raised as a result of this bill, the one, five, six. I think it it definitely brings up a lot of important points that need to be dialogued further. And certainly concur that it would be very beneficial to have a um a roundtable discussion with regards to these issues. Because these are the very issues that are plaguing our people within our respective villages and within our homes. Um, you know, I think we need to define to certain degree what it is that we we determine to be a nuisance, and how do we? How do we address enforcement? Because we do see in our communities inconsistencies uh with how our laws and a lot of these things, yes, they are. By current laws, but the biggest challenge is we're finding is the ability to enforce those laws. And options, what options do individual homeowners, for example, have if an adjacent. Uh, you know, homeowner, you know, decides to stack, you know, five or six junk cars in the front yard or the backyard. Uh, how does, how does a community deal with that if the government itself? Does not or is incapable of addressing proper enforcement, particularly for safety issues within the community, and to what degree, of course. The fine line of how do we, you know, the the sense of personal freedom and private property rights and things of that nature, how do, how do we address that? And then at what what point do you determine it infringes upon the safety and well-being of other members of the community? But I certainly appreciate the input of our mayors. I think they they give us the uh. The real sense of what's happening every day out in the community because their challenge with, you know, their residents coming to them, I'm sure, if not. They themselves seeing these situations out in their villages of of these type of issues that are coming up. And and, you know, have limited ability to do enforcement because the actual jurisdiction authority falls within the key agencies in the government of Guam. And what can we do to strengthen that process? Uh, so that at the end of the day, what our people really want is a quality of life, what quality of life? And how do we define that? Uh, so that we can ensure that, and and also just the overall safety and well-being of our community. So with that, I have no further comments, Madam, Madam Speaker, I just hope that uh we do follow up. Because I think this is an issue that really hits close to home, so to speak, for our residents out there, and how can we have the government be more responsive? We may never get to the details of some of the issues people bring up, because I think they might fall, fall beyond what the government's capable of responding to. But a lot of these key issues are well within the jurisdiction authority of the government of Guam and these key agencies, and what do we need to do to? Facilitate and get that responsiveness out in the community so our people can have a safe. Uh, living environment uh within their homes and within their community. So with that, thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on Bill one, five, six.
Thank you, Senator Brown. So, uh, Mayor Gogui, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, as a matter of fact. Thank you. You know, I guess, at the end of the day, you know, um, the the whole concept of this bill is 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 noteworthy. In fact, you know, Mayor Hoffman and uh in our discussion yesterday, you know, um, had talked about how over. Many years, in fact, I'd say even decades, mayors have been concerned about the ability to enforce things. You know, that, you know, we get agencies uh who are called upon to uh act on on. What generally is considered a nuisance, and they say, well, contact your mayor, and then kind of shake our head and says like. Oh, I mean, where do we fit in? Um, and and so. A lot of times, yeah, especially when I heard, when I heard the uh Senator Duainis talk about in other jurisdictions. Guam is not like a lot of other jurisdictions, because in other jurisdictions, uh, and I think Guam is unique, because in other jurisdictions. They have constitutions, they have uh. Municipalities or cities that are incorporated, and municipalities are able to enact ordinances, et cetera, et cetera. So when we, when we use that loosely uh in other jurisdictions. It's great that we're striving to uh uh point in that direction, but. But we really need to kind of take a look at this particular bill, and a roundtable would be great. Um, but uh, uh, my concern is not just, you know, uh, it better defining what what. Uh, what is defined as a nuisance, but the the enforcement and more important, the adjudication. We often get caught up in the adjudication of these bills, these or these laws that are enacted. And and like Tom had mentioned, I mean, it just becomes so cumbersome, because it involves a court process. When when fines are assessed, it normally stays with the courts, it never comes back to the 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 agencies that are actually making uh. Providing the enforcement, ergo, you know, we we're always concerned about the lack of resources. So if there's a mechanism, and again, I'm not an attorney, but if there's a mechanism that we can actually incorporate into this bill. Some sort of administrative. Adjudication of any of this enforcement activity, whether it be notices or actual citations, and that, you know, we kind of. Relieve the pressure on the courts to adjudicate this, and whatever fines are assessed. By at least a portion of it makes makes a way, makes a way back to the agencies that are trying to enforce these laws. I mean, it's a win-win, I think, all all the way around, but at at present, uh, you know, it it's frustrating, I'm sure, for Public Health, for. Department of Agriculture, because even when they, when they um. Issue citations. You know, and they they take a look at the amount of effort it took to get a a citation issued and adjudicated. And a fine assessed, and that, set setting aside whether or not the fine is actually paid by the individual who potentially is indigent. I mean, at the end of the day, we're, where are we? How are we going to get to a point where it we're motivated, you know, we're we're, there's a, we're incentivized to actually. Not just enforce the law, but build resources so that we can continue enforcing these laws. And that's where we're really, I mean, you take a look at uh Public Health, their their enforcement officers. Are far less today than they were ten years ago. Animal control, they're down to one uh animal control officer. Whereas last year, a couple of years ago, they had three. I mean, they've cut down, they they've lost sixty-six, a little over sixty-six percent of their workforce. And 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 we can talk about, you know, uh, attrition, et cetera, et cetera, but the, at the end of the day, we need to make sure that. These revenues that are collected from the citations uh or or these orders or these, whatever we're going to call it. It comes as, you know, some of it comes back to the respective agency so we can build capacity. We can use it to build resource, real resources and build capacity. So I I just wanted to highlight that because, you know, uh, Guam is not unlike any other jurisdiction. I'll tell you what, I've lived in many parts of the world, and and, uh, you know, it is, it is frustrating when I, you know, as a mayor, when I sit down and I talk to people. Who live in as many places or almost as many places as I've lived in, and they say, well, you know, when I came from California. I when I came from Washington State or I came from Virginia, they don't have this problem. Why not? You know, I, why is Guam, why is Guam having these types of problems? And so, you know, and and finding a resolution to it has always been my end goal, and and making it work and and enforceable. So, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Gogui. Before we close, Chief Nado, I I, your your detailed testimony talks about, um, you know, the cumbersome. Current process you have because it is a a criminal, I believe. Action that you are taking, is that right? Well, anyway, yeah, and you give lots of, I think, very helpful um. Information on how we can proceed with this. Has your agency um recently, or, you know, any? Any examples you can cite for us where you've been able to go all the way through and enforce a public nuisance? Action?
Yes, uh, this actually occurred probably the one and only that actually went all the way down to where the. I think the court got involved was, uh, ironically, was a former mayor who had established a uh. Established basically numerous pigs on a private residential. established basically numerous pigs on a private residential lot. And he was issued multiple citations to a point where we were forced to refer the matter to the Office of Attorney General. And they proceeded on and I think it was through the court order, from most certain to the court order, he was directed to basically mitigate the nuisance. So that's the only one I recall that went to that level. All the ones that we handled in the past, it's a constant reminder to them, reissues a citation, threat of further action along that line. But the, the only one regarding the, the former mayor and the, and the pig on the, on the residential lot was the only one that I recall that went that distance, Speaker.
All right, thank you. And Senator Paris, and I know Mayor Hoffman, you had your hand up. Maybe I'll recognize the Mayor Hoffman and then you, Senator Paris. Mayor Hoffman.
Thank you. I, I did want to do two points on this. And I know many of your offices have sent us even emails about public nuisances, blocking of the sidewalk. I think Senator Brown sent me one about the neighbor and the trash. And we, those are the frustrations that we had is that, how do we deal with this? I mean, as people saw when the Marble Cave incident happened, every agency jumped on the opportunity to give them a citation and do that. And for their concern out of the environment or whatever else there. But where was that concern for the hundreds of cars that are lining up a street that could be leaking fluids? Where is that same passion and concern from the AG's office and EPA and Public Health and everybody else and Public Works that decided, hey, we're going to go after these, the Marble Cave violators? So that's where people are, you know, I have people who have flooding the same issue of roadways that were built and building permits that were issued that creates flooding in specific houses. And it's washing them out and they're having the same problem. And they're saying, hey, Marble Cave, the AG just jumped on this and DPW. And I've been asking for this for 10 years. So I, I feel their pain as, as, as a mayor and I, and I appreciate what Public Health tries to do there. And they have come out. I think the last time I've had people from Public Health come out here, those people are retired already. And that's how, that's how long ago I've had Public Health Village, despite me asking. I send emails here and I understand they got to do the restaurants, ratings, they got to do everything else. Right now, they're assisting in the COVID operations. So yes, it's, it is frustrating, but, you know, being able to tell a family that, why do you live next to a house that has 20 dogs? I can't do any, I'm trying to figure out how do we do this? I know. So I think the same passion that these agencies jumped on for this, if they can do the same when it comes to the environment for these nuisances that do exist, that really plague our villages, I think it, it would make people have this trust in government. But right now, they feel the government doesn't do anything. And it waits till it comes to really bad situation that, you know, everyone starts saying, oh, yeah, that's a, that's pretty bad. You know, these buildings have been up for so long. So it, I appreciate everyone's passion in this and I look forward to the roundtable. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hoffman. Senator Paris.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, just a question for Tom Nadeau. In their rules and regs, how do you define a nuisance?
So actually, it's a statute within our Title 10, Chapter 20. And it's very, it's what we call our catch-all provision. Whatever the director deems that it's a, in fact, I think I read it off the, I'm sorry, if I can just reread my, so whatever is a, okay, so I'm sorry, didn't mean for that language. So anything that is determined by a director to be dangerous to life, injurious to health, or renders soil, air, or water, or food impure or unwholesome. So it's broad, but we don't pursue private nuisances, I mentioned. And how do we differentiate, differentiate between one or the other? One of the simplest way we do is if there's an existing environmental health, public health law that with the, with the restrictions or violation, then we use that. For example, everything from mosquito breeding sites to rodent harbinger site, to allowing poultry or livestock on private residences or residential neighborhood, along that line. So it's very broad, it's kind of a catch-all, but we focus on public nuisance, those that affect the community as a whole, rather than individual violations. So I hope I answered the question, Senator.
Yeah, so I have a follow-up question. How do you deal with noise? Because noise is, can be a health hazard. If you are exposed to a long-term noise level, it can damage your hearing. So is that, I mean, that could be a public nuisance even though it's emanating from a private property? Is that correct?
In, in theory, yes, we can apply our public nuisance, but we don't. It comes down to again, what standard are we applying? Some people are extremely sensitive or some people tolerate the noise. I mean, I recall attending parties or having a neighbor having a party and it's like a concert. But yet, you know, is that a public nuisance or concerned that I'm the only one who's complaining? So it's, it's a very subjective, you know, means of determining whether it's a violation. Someone mentioned anything past 10 o'clock or 10:30 violation. I, I don't know what that law that is, it's cited numerous times to me, but I'm not familiar with that particular law. I'm not sure that's a GPD law, but I'm not certain. But I will say that there's certain things we just don't have any standards to, to compare or to rely upon to determine whether it's a public nuisance. So that's about something I brought up in our, our testimony as well. I mean, there's got to be some kind of establishment of standards, I guess. That means certain decibel level is a public nuisance and for how long? What time during the day? I think those are things that needs to be addressed if we're seeking to pursue loud noises as a public nuisance.
Yeah, so that's something I, I believe is, there's a federal law in regards to noise levels. And there is more of an objective way of measuring these things and, you know, versus it being a subjective thing. So I'm willing to work more to help develop those standards and pertaining to, you know, how to make this more enforceable. And I understand the, the crying need here that there is, you know, this is something that is greatly needed. So I do appreciate the efforts of my, of the sponsor and the co-sponsor of this bill to, to address something that's been longstanding in our community regarding, you know, things that are impactful to, to our health, public, private health and as well as the, the environment. So I'm looking forward to the roundtable.
All right, thank you. I know the Deputy Director Cruz has to go. Is there any questions for Deputy Director Cruz? Senator Duenas?
I, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, I don't want to belabor this and I don't want to get into a debate. But I just want to say one thing to address what Mayor Gobey said as well. Yes, we're not Spokane or we're not a municipality in California. But sometimes it's a uniformity, even say, why is it like this in Timouni? But we have problems in Baragada. Why, why do we have, you know, a Gura housing that sometimes has more enforcement and more capabilities in terms of what we do there and then we have? I think that what I'm trying to say is it's the uniformity. And it's to be able, be able to educate the public in terms of what, you know, ordinances mean and what it's about so that, so that we can move forward. And not the pointing of the fingers in different ways as a, as a salute or as a non-solution. But we, we have a disparate issue even within village to village and even within subdivisions and other things. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. So I think we need an overall government policy and not necessarily comparing ourselves to Europe or Spokane, but, but something that even in our own island, we have such a disparate enforcement sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Are there any questions for the Deputy Director of the Department of Agriculture? If not, thank you, Deputy Director, for being with us today and for your testimony. I, I will continue to have further discussion. Mayor Hoffman, did you have your hand up again or done? All right, Senator Ada. If there are no further questions, we will ask the sponsor of the bill to close. Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'd like to thank all those that came to testify today and to my colleagues as well. Absolutely, we need to update our statutes that are in the books. And this is how we go about it. You know, we have a collective roundtable that we hope that will be scheduled soon, Madam Speaker, so that we'll be able to address these issues and bring all those stakeholders to the table. And let's start getting these things rolling out so that we can better enforce our laws that are in statute and continue to update the laws that need to be updated because a lot of them have been, laws that have been back in the seventies, back in the eighties. And we'll tackle one issue at a time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ada. I do believe the AG is very crucial to this discussion. I believe I'm going to ask him or invite him to brief all the agencies as to their powers to enforce nuisances and the Attorney General's authority and how to facilitate these powers that are currently in our statute. And then how to, to better finesse these as this bill is intended to do. All right, that, there being no additional individuals to present for the testimony, this committee will consider Bill 156-36COR duly heard. Written testimonies can be submitted to my office at email senatorsatgama@gmail.com. Public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 11:25 AM. This is Massey Torres.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.